It is six o'clock and I will call the Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, school board meeting to order. And we will note that we have two board members, Jackson, Karen Anderson, and Nick Anderson. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the mission statement. The mission of Holy Public Schools is to bring together students, parents, staff, and community to provide quality education with an emphasis on developing the full potential of the individual. And at this time, we have an open forum for citizens to address the school board due to the agenda. We do have three items we're going to add to the complete agenda. We've received a retirement after the agenda was printed, and that would be from Patricia Bonzalay, a driver, bus driver. We also have an additional summer hire of Amy Springer, who will be a BA at Holy School. We're going to add those two to the consent agenda, as those other items are under that as well. And then we have the school resource officer contract, which is an action discussion, which we will take care of after our policies. So we have three additions to Ray's agenda, so I would need a motion and a second to approve each of them.
I have something I'd like to bring up, too. I would like to reinstate the public comment section at the end of the board meeting. First of all, there was no discussion at the board level regarding this discontinuation. It's been there forever. Secondly, I felt bad that after we could not even acknowledge their retirees, or no other group can either, and after the public attends the meeting, I can see how they would especially have comments and questions about what they heard or learned during the meeting. They are very aware that we, as a board, listen and don't comment at this time. We have this comment section. It makes, do not have this comment section, makes us seem so top-down. It allows us to hear students, parents, and taxpayers. I see all here as partners, many who entrust us with their most precious charges, their children. It's healthy and democratic to reinstate this comment section. It makes us seem better and more transparent and more...
Okay, so the second opportunity for public comment was discontinued last summer, I believe, by previous board member, and that must have been by Ms. B. So I would like to possibly make two board members move into this evening, so I would like to add this to an upcoming work session and discuss it as per... Okay, so we would need a motion and a second on the three additions to the agenda.
Motion to approve the three additions.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will go ahead and go with the consent agenda next. And you can see we have numerous positions here in the school district, and so we're ready to start here, and approving the approval of eighteen minutes and the board gives. So we need a motion and a second on that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion was made by Patrick, seconded by Stephanie. And just prior to the vote, I would just like to call attention to the three retirements that we received since the last board meeting, would be Carol Miller as the schoolkeeper, John Sheen as the schoolkeeper, and then Patricia Bonzalay as the bus driver. So a motion was made by Patrick, seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have the resolution for accepting gifts, which is on page eighty-nine in your packet. And we have four donations at this time. Holy Basketball Association has donated one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars towards a unified basketball jerseys. Ladies and eight Hertz Brothers, five hundred dollar donation for unified club events. Lock stops of education to all women. Excuse me, and that would go to the Intermountain School of Defense Fund, Dr. National Bank, one thousand dollars for the glove department. And we need a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by Wayne, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have also a resolution for the Minnesota State High School, we, for our membership twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and we'll leave it to the packet if there was an open term that Mr. Eubanks received. Doctor Perry, you have something there?
I do, and this is the resolution that the board maintains each year, and this allows us to be, our students to participate in this, so the case will be...
Okay, and then I believe that the clerk signs this document digitally, and so just ask the clerk to be aware that that will be coming to your email. I think there was some difficulty with it last year, so we'll touch that early this year with the initial, is it docu-sign, I believe?
That is correct, and the clerk and I have had conversations about that, the resolution. We do have some names that have been in from Mr. Eubanks, and then once that's completed, I will notify the clerk that you will accomplish this kind of document.
All right, so I need a motion and a second for the resolution of membership in Minnesota State High School to allow our participants to take part. Motion by Stephanie, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then second on the agenda is for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. We have a non-individual of individuals for the fall, and this is continuation of the budgetary constraints. There are another individuals listed here, the A's, the helping, and then the general secretary. Obviously, individuals have been properly informed. And I would look for a motion and a second. A motion by Patrick, second.
Second.
Seconded by Wayne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We also have a way off indicated in our board packet for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. This individual is a school coffee room employee, and this is also due to the budgetary constraints. And we need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion by Patrick, and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Our custodial contract for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, two-year contract, signify by the school.
I do have highlights to share of that contract. We reached an agreement about custodial in the unit back in February. In year one, for the salary increase, we looked at a five percent, in year two, it was also a five percent. And then we also added additional language, additional dollars into the four-year contribution. The unit did not see an increase in their health insurance, so the total package was a nine point sixty-eight percent. And we had some other minor language changes as well in the contract. Again, I want to thank the custodial unit, it was a fund for people to work with, and we were able to work really diligently and look to accomplish. I agree with the master agreement.
And then we need a motion and a second on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five custodial contract.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second. Motion by Wayne, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we are on to the two-year program for the food service employees, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five.
Our child nutrition service unit also saw a similar increase with salary at five percent of year one. Year two was a five percent increase, and year one for health insurance, no increase. And then we did increase the dollar amount of health insurance to eighty-one fifty. And you'll notice that we're aligning the four-year contribution. So again, that's similar to the custodial unit, and total package for two years is a nine point two-two percent. Again, you'll see that there's some minor changes, and also as part of this unit, you'll see an L U regarding change in the days of employment for, I believe, the folks. And again, I want to thank the child nutrition negotiators. We had, again, very good conversation, and it was very cordial, and we were able to look through the unit to find a suitable agreement.
And just as I've been watching these School Finance One-on-One videos, child nutrition that is, that is control of funds, if I'm correct.
That is correct.
All right, I need a motion and a second to accept the twenty-three, twenty-five food service contract.
Make a motion to accept the food service contract. Second.
Motion by Wayne, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We also have the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five terms of employment for our van drivers.
Our van driver drivers, that's a nine, we need a nice group. And so year one, we saw a four percent increase in wages, and with no increases in health insurance in this particular unit, we do not have any employees that can take health insurance. And then year two is a four point four percent increase, so the total package was eight point three-three percent. And we also saw an increase in longevity as well. And again, I want to thank the people that represent the van drivers, and we were able to move through, could have been a very short, long time.
And I would need a motion and a second to accept the twenty-three, twenty-five terms of employment for van drivers.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Stephanie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We also have our secretarial contract for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five.
And I apologize, I'm not sure what happened, why it's not listed, but our secretary contract, again, very, very similar to the four-year contribution for child alignment, it increased in health insurance, and also increased the salary to fifty-five as well, and total package is ninety point six or so, which residents can offer. And I just have that as one dozen.
And I would need a motion and a second to accept the secretarial contract.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion by Patrick, seconded by Wayne. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we are going to move on to our policies requiring review and this is a discussion only. The first reading will call for public comment on the following policies. Policy five thirty-one, Pledge of Allegiance. Policy five thirty-two, police officers and crisis teams to remove students without using school grounds. Policy five thirty-three is our wellness policy. And at this time, I think we're going to pull it because our wellness committee is actually working on the policy currently, so that will be coming forward.
Correct, we want to make sure that we're aligning what the committee's recommendations are to the policy, so it is in the process of scheduling another policy committee with the representatives of the wellness committee.
And policy six eleven is Holy School. There are many of the board members that have a discussion on those policies. This is the first reading.
On the Pledge of Allegiance, I do. In regard to policy five thirty-one, Pledge of Allegiance, the pledge is recorded each and every day in every classroom in this district. The board voted seven whole to support this. At that time, Wayne was not with us, but I know our community supports it. It makes me proud, and I don't think one can be too patriotic. Our policy was in place before the vote. Let's have the courage to say it, to say the Pledge of Allegiance will be recited each and every day in every classroom. This change speaks to who we are and what we support. It currently reads, I think, at least once a week or something.
Yeah, and that's why we're having this discussion, so we can certainly bring that back to policy and reviews, have the policy committee on, and put one in practice into policy. So we will read over that on call, so five thirty-one. Any other discussion on any of the other two policies? All right, and at this time, then, we are going to have discussion action on the SRO officer contract, our school resource officer.
I have that at the board table, as while it's, that came out to you. I think we, Chief Katie, didn't realize our deadline for studying the SRO contract, but as reassured me, and you'll notice from years past, that two things have changed. One is the date, and the second thing that has changed is our obligation for the payment for the SRO. And you'll notice that it is less simply because of the age, it's less than on the previous SRO. So those are the two differences that should speak. And I would recommend that we continue our agreement with this duty of Holy, including the school resource officer.
And we use it, the date has changed, it's just, the July, or July, or...
Do we use health and safety dollars to pay for the SRO?
Right, so any discussion on the SRO contract? During that, we need a motion and a second.
Motion, second.
Motion by Stephanie, seconded by Sharon. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have Miss Naska present for our budget report.
All right, the enrollment for, as of May first, it looks like we did lose a few kids. We lost them in elementary, but what we lost in elementary, we picked up in middle school. And then it looks like we did lose one student in eleventh grade, however, our enrollment did still remain stable this year, and we would have better numbers later this summer than what we actually ended up with for enrollment.
I was just looking at that, just wanted to call this out, which is interesting, that our projected was eighteen ninety, and that was May, our number, and that's saying the column is eighteen ninety.
Remember the...
But that's before, yeah, that's, that's just a, it's pretty, it's pretty tight, though.
I was removing that adjustment, to make that pretty moving on forward.
So that's pretty good, being in the line of error. I haven't mentioned, I think, as of previous years, we've, at this time, there were those numbers that had a large discrepancy, so I do want to call it a little, a job load on the line.
Were you able to hear my ear? What was that? Were you able to hear the discussion?
I was, yes. We do keep a really close eye on enrollments, obviously, because we know that's what fuels our funding, so we do the best we can to make sure everything's updated accurately and timely in MDE's website, to make sure that we are really keeping close track of that. I cannot share the revenue and expenditure reports with you guys, you have that in front of you, the right type of down the screen. Oh, perfect. So it looks like in April, we, in our general fund, spent about two million, three hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, giving us a total of nineteen point two million dollars up to date, or to date. Food service, we spent one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, totaling one million, three hundred ninety thousand dollars year-to-date. Community services, we've spent, what, eight-two thousand, giving us a total of seven hundred fifty-one thousand. We don't have anything in our building fund. Our debt redemption, it's like we paid nine hundred and fifty dollars, and getting that with some fees for bonds. And then our student activity account, we spent fifteen thousand dollars, leaving us at ninety-seven thousand dollars year-to-date. The total expenditure in all funds as of April, or April thirtieth, two million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. This time last year, we had spent two million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. I know we had some retro going out in April, so that added to our expenses. Then in regards to revenue, we received two million, four hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, leaving us at eighteen million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars at the end date. Food service, we received three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, totaling one million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Community service, we received forty-nine thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, leaving us at seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. Student activities, we received six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, totaling ninety-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, giving us a total as of April thirtieth of two million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, and bringing us up to date that we've received twenty-one million, six hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. This time last year, we had received five million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, and I'm going to assume that that is a lot of federal funds last year that we've received. And last year, at this time, we received a total of twenty-one million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So if we look back up at April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, it looks like we are still one million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, sixty-six dollars short of revenue, we have more expenditures than we do revenues currently.
Is anyone having questions for Miss Naska? I do not hear any questions for you, O'Gara, do you have any further?
I do not.
Thank you. We have the minister here.
I need to point out a few things, this is just hot, it's hot off the press, but the end of the legislative session, I wanted to share a few highlights. And the supplemental education budget bill, I believe that's my board report. There were three different focuses. One was on the REED Act, the second was on student absenteeism, and the third was the trust in the teacher shortage. So some of the highlights from the REED Act, it modifies the thirty-three million dollars in appropriation. You remember last legislative session, that was to be used for curriculum and intervention materials? And school districts were really worried about that money because what we're through the process to receive a refund, to make a request for the money, and what the legislature did is they divided that money out now for all school districts. So what we're going to see in fiscal year twenty-four, and again, this is based on a per pupil, so this is approximate, again, based on enrollment, and what MDE has figured out is that enrollment being at eighteen, twenty-five, we know it's a bit less than than that. So seventy-six thousand and a little change for fiscal year twenty-four, and then we're projecting in fiscal year twenty-five, about sixty-nine thousand dollars. Another requirement from the REED Act is that we will enter into, we require to, enter into a memorandum of understanding with our exclusive representatives of teachers, and discussing that thirty-four million dollars, so that's going back to that seventy-six thousand and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and how we'll totally use those dollars, and it's set aside for training for teachers. So whether that is stipends, it could be based on hourly rates, and then other orders that are necessary to complete training. And again, this is high level right now, I'm sure that we'll get a lot more information and direction about the ins and outs of the new legislation. And then this aid, again, must be put into a reserved account, a regularcy that will see if you have used or freely in the past, and now again, it will be in a reserved account. And then it also expands our eligible uses of literacy aid. One item that we've talked quite a bit about at the board level is the student support personality aid, and that was forty thousand dollars that was given to school districts, but again, that money was to be used to support people that we hired during the pandemic, so just a social worker, a school counselor. We weren't able to use that aid, as many other schools in the state were not. So we will receive that aid, but again, it will be restricted, and we are looking forward to learning more about what exactly we can use that aid or put that money in to use, and we will be able to carry, get any balance, be able to carry that balance for in subsequent fiscal years. Food service, remember, as Patrick had talked about, that's a separate fund, and what was interesting about food service is that with our food service, we weren't able to borrow any furniture with the new legislation, as long as... As long as we have a free year surplus in our food service fund, we are able to turn that lunchroom furniture, so we can get the new lunchroom tables, for example, and that is not going to be a cost against the general fund expenditures and capital. Another highlight is payee for school closures. Again, we have in our contracts that we just pay for e-learning days, but again, this is an expansion that requires that we have a scheduled instructional day. And if canceled for any part of that school day, so let's say that the weather, for example, turns not great, and we need to release students at 12:30, then employees will still receive their whole day's wage, as long as we're coming in as an instructional day. There's changes to the legislation for paraprofessionals. This year, we're required to provide eight hours of training for the 24, 25 school year Holy, will be required to provide six hours of training. And that, one of the other changes to the legislation this, this last year was paraprofessionals being highly qualified. So our paraprofessionals had to take a test, and we have, we did reimburse once they passed the test. And now districts will also be required to pay the testing fees for paraprofessionals who have not passed the paraprofessional assessment. And then we also will be required to get assistance to help them pass the test. In terms of academics, last year we had quite a few changes to curriculum. And this year, there will be statewide health standards. We currently have fully adopted standards, but again, it'll be statewide academic standards. Until those are in effect, we'll maintain our full standards. And I would assume that there will be a work group similar to what has happened in the past. When we look at education policy bills, during our DAPs committee, we talked about the REED Act. One of the changes, in addition to what I mentioned earlier in the supplemental bill, is that the training will be extended for one year for Phase 1 teachers. So that will move the training out to July 1 of 2026. And then currently are working on our literacy plan, and REED will be required to include information about structured literacy training for teachers and other staff, and REED and planning uses in our local literacy plan. And then if applicable, we'll include information on our district's plan and timeline for adopting any of our new curriculum and materials. During, I think, one of our work sessions, we talked about cell phones and technology. And we will be required to have a cellphone policy in place, and we'll need to have that done next year on March 15. And from what I've read on our principal, principal associations, we'll be working on this initiative and collaborating together to look at best research strategies. So I look forward to learning more from our principal organizations. Civics, graduation requirements, we have a delay instead of graduation requirements, and that's effective to the 25, 26, I don't, I think that should be 26, 27 school year. I'll double check, and I think I have a table on that. Access to library materials. It prohibits a public library from banning, removing, or otherwise restricting access to a book or other material based solely on its viewpoint or messages, ideas, or opinions. And so it will require a governing body of a library to adopt a library materials policy. I believe that we spent quite a bit of time looking at that. So once we get more guidance, we'll have to make sure that our policy doesn't align with state statute. For access to space for mental health, parent intel health, we do need to provide students space during the school hours, we're trying to do that. So that should be an issue for us here. Unscheduled removal from class, it's encouraged. So again, we'll learn more about, and where encouraged is, public school to adopt a policy on parent modification. If a student was removed from a class, then their unscheduled service gets, again, only more guidance of what that means. World Special Course, our plan, that is a name of change, so comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. And then finally, mental health education. So we will be required to provide mental health instruction, and that will align with the health standards starting in 26, 27. So that is the health standards, 26, 27. There's a lot, not as much, she doesn't ask her, but still significant changes again.
Well, thank you. That's a lot of information. I'm in particular interested in the cellphone policy that she said in March, which she deserved to have that, because I had brought that forward at one time. And then I'm sure this may be able to be involved with the model policy as well, let's hope, otherwise Principal Association and Child Registitors might have it. Any questions for Dr. Perry regarding the report?
Is any of this instruction on the REED Act going to require that we change our sket, our school schedule?
We believe so, and our next work session will be addressing that topic, I guess, the same board. Well, I think we're in the same situation as a lot of districts, and I would say yes. But again, we just do not have the guidance necessary to make an informed decision. And we have been working with staff development, so we talked about it at our advisory meeting tonight as well.
You said it was discussed at DAPs? All right, enrollment to community reports, DAPs did meet this evening?
Yeah, and it was a very good discussion, mostly about PDIS. Just kind of an overview of how long we have had PDIS, positive, behavioral, and what's the other? Interventions, yeah, with support. How long have you been using it? About approximately five years in our school district. Overview the three tiers of it, really good presentation by Mr. Melbren. And then we did have more in-depth overview of the REED Act with Dr. Perry, which we also got into staff development, issues with that. Deadlines for these things have been pushed out, fortunately for us. And some plans are burning up, it looks like, for what that's going to look like in the near future.
Thank you. Also, I believe wellness, Matt, obviously. We did not, since the last meeting?
I was talking about that.
Okay. Admins, usually Mr. Ken, are there any free points on that? Did you have any free report on that, Ms. Naska?
I know that the meeting was very short. I was unable to be there as well because we were negotiating our individual contracts. So that was not very good.
I know buildings and grounds do meet. We met on May 8th with SiteLogic, who has come on board to help us with their indoor air quality project. And also, Mr. Darwin Pluck is greatly involved in that as well. Some of the highlighted considerations in this is in your board copy as well. Making sure that mechanical systems are efficient, we're planning for future needs and expansion of HV and seat systems for the intermediate school. We're adding modern control systems to optimize schedules for programming, finding ways to centralize mechanical systems, choosing designs and spaces that are accessible, desirable, and functional, capitalizing on as many indoor air quality improvements on the one-time opportunity, that is per building, but the canons can be tied together. Bringing the appropriate amount of fresh air into all areas at high school, and using and reusing assets for feasible. And again, these are capital, not a pressure in the locker room.
I think another thing we got was capitalizing on solar energy possibilities.
All right, and then the Policy Committee, that as well, and those policies were previously discussed in this evening's meeting. We do have some meeting event notices. Our last student day will be May 30th. We have graduation on June 1st. Information will be coming toward members for appropriate time of arrival and year to meet. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is June 24th. And we also have a work session scheduled from 5:30 PM on May 29th. And I would like to offer our administrative change opportunity to speak this morning. I was just thinking that a lot of the years, the combined, the last one. Mr. Fox?
Just a bit of exhortation last night. We had this partner, he's not here, and we've got a comment, he's not around, and you attended. Dr. Bill, is that where we're going?
Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, just to give you that, from this said, the elementary school with Henry's, John, and Earl, and Joan, and we had Heidi running back in the building today, so that was good. We have that, so that's exciting.
Mr. Cooper?
Definitely.
And then we have our opportunity for board members. Wayne, do you have anything?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Okay, Patrick?
Just wanted to say thank you to everyone that came tonight, as always. And we have Memorial Day next Monday, and I bring this up that over at the Veterans Administration, there is always a program in the morning, and myself and Miss Starling from the Middle School Band Department, as well as many fully alumni, we play in the State Club Youth School Band there. And if you've ever had an opportunity to come see that program, it's a really great program. But there's usually also a program here, so there are kind of competing programs at the same time. So I guess depending on which one you're able to attend, or which is closer to you and your Memorial Day plans, I would encourage you to take it one of those.
Sharon?
I attended the FFA banquet. They did a wonderful job of celebrating their achievement. Achievement was apparent in all their videos and presentations. Little known fact, the Holy FFA chapter is the fifth in Minnesota in collecting porn for Camp Courage. It's been supporting this camp for challenged youth for decades. Congratulations to Carol Miller and John Shima and Patricia Bonzalay on their retirement. I want to thank you, thank them for making us shine, and good luck on your future endeavors. You are wish good health and happiness. Condolences to the Beeler family on the loss of Sharon. Donnie and Sharon were a great partnership that gave school and extent, that gave to school and extended community for over one half a century. Thank you. Congratulations to the Hall of Fame recipients, Charlie Lawrence and Jamie Keller. Thank you for food service, for the great food at the FFA banquet and recognition events. You are the best. Also, thanks to all those presents tonight, it's your right to be heard. Finally, congratulations to our soon to be graduates.
I would just say that my perspective prior to being on the school board and what it is now are two very different things. The most difficult thing as a board member is to make any kind of budgetary cuts. It is not easy, it is not, you try to make it as black and white as you can, but each and every one of us has involved a person, and it's very difficult. Emails from the community, the whole goal for that is alignment, trying to get things to start, you know, with our board chair, instead of each and every one of us responding, because that sometimes creates even more. So alignment is the key there. Patrick, thank you for bringing those finance 101 videos together. The more we can educate you, the more you understand how school operates. And I will tell you, aside from other than being on school board is one of the most judged and thankless jobs. Election is coming up in November. Any of you are interested in getting involved in that type of work?
Thank you. And I will just add, thank you to Sharon for offering condolences to Sharon Beeler. She's a long time ago, but we have skills for, as Mr. Husler. And also thank you to Patrick and Dr. Perry on coming to our videos that are posted, and hopefully we get some tips on that, and we'll learn and take the opportunity, take advantage of your efforts, is what I guess I'm trying to say. Kelly has told me that as of the end of June, things will start for election processes for school board members, you know, I think we'll have more positions that would be open. And then also, I received an email from MSBA regarding training, our school board training. And their recommendation is school board members, new school, school board members would have Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4 completed in the first six months of being on the school board. And then also Katie Condro from MSBA has offered to do Phase 3 training in-house, so we're going to discuss that as for our next work session as well. I'd like some input on that. And I think that's all that I would add for the evening. Motion, when you second, for adjournments?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Vane. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 6:53.